Yeah, welcome to the work session for the Southampton Village Zoning Board of Appeals, May 18th. We're starting with just an acknowledgement that we will at our public hearing be ready to vote on two pending decisions. Case number 3087, 71 Walnut Street, and case number 3102, 157 Wickapod Road. So we'll have those decisions ready to vote at the public hearing next Thursday. So our first pending case is case number 3096, Andrew Spritzer, 85 Hildreth Street. Do any of the board members have any questions or comments about this ongoing matter?
No, we've had this one around forever.
So I think the latest-
No questions.
He's just got the garage and the... What's the other thing he's got?
The front-
Two garages in here.
The front porch.
The front porch.
I don't have any problem with the front porch whatsoever. I think we had some questions about the expansion of the garage and the building inspector visited the property and issued letters describing what he found over there. And if we could just take a look, and Dan, this addresses the questions you had. If I subtract the seven by 12 portion that Building Inspector Chris Talbot noted, I'm still left with about a 21-foot-deep garage. Is that approximately your math as well?
You subtract the seven foot.
Yes.
What is it now, is 28?
I believe, it's very small print, but it looks like 28-plus. The question is, if you have a 28-foot-deep garage and you take away the portion that Building Inspector Chris Talbot noted, which was seven by 12, don't you still have a garage which is 21 feet deep? And is that a typical depth for a garage?
That's sufficient for a garage, yeah. Right, Dan?
A car will fit in 21 feet.
So it just goes to whether or not we need to grant a variance for an expansion of the garage toward the street or not?
I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I really don't have any problem with that. He wanted sheds for storage. He probably wants a little extra so he had room for cars and some bikes in the garage or, you know, put away some furniture or whatever.
He's got an awfully small lot. He's withdrawn the application for the sheds, withdrawn the application to the pool. I think the extensions of the garage is okay.
Well, I think he had a proper garage and he took part of it away for other uses. Is that right? Do we know that?
That I don't know. Dan, what's the typical depth for a garage?
A minimum depth is usually like 22 feet.
Okay, so you're right. I mean, this is just adding a little storage toward the back.
Right.
Okay, and I do also think it's a fairly minimal variance request with respect to the forward portion toward the street. So, I mean, again, I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a minor variance request.
It's five feet?
I have no problem with it.
Twenty-five feet where 20 is required? Oh, no, that's the porch.
Yeah, he has a diagram that shows-
He has many diagrams. Which one are you talking about? That's the part I don't like.
The last one.
Yeah, we need to locate the diagram where he shows the amount of actual relief he needs from the rear yard setback.
He's not asking for any rear yard setback.
That's right.
I thought, yeah, correct me, I think we need to find the diagram. I thought that that was the only relief that he really needed when you looked at the garage, that it ended up complying with the front yard. But again, I think we all need to locate the last-
But the actual, on the agenda says, "to an eastern front yard setback of 20 feet where 25 feet is required." I think that there was discussion that you're right, but that's not what we see here. I found the diagrams he had written all over, someone had written on the surveys or the site plans, I'm not looking at all of them. And so it was completely-
We have a better one than that.
-difficult to figure out. I actually drove past and the garage door was open once. And there's a, I don't, they had a whole bunch of building materials in there and no cars, so I couldn't really tell.
That was for the porch coming.
But if he had a garage that was proper and then proceeded to carve it up for other uses, I see that there was a laundry part, but that wouldn't prevent the car from going in. It's the length of the garage, right, that we're talking about?
Yes.
I have, I could never get a good feeling about whether or not that had been diminished, the length had been cut, and that a wall had been put up and there was something behind it. Now, I don't know.
The building inspector went in and looked at it, and he said it was exactly what they had applied for and done years ago, so that there was no other additional work done in that garage.
Oh, okay. But then was it used as a garage?
I don't, you know, it's a garage space, you know, people-
Okay.
Use them all kinds of ways.
You're right, Dan.
For the time being, so these are the questions we'll have for the applicant when they appear next Thursday. The drawing that represents the relief requested and also a clarification on the relief requested, because it does seem different from what we now have on our agenda. It seems substantially less than what we have on our agenda. So I think we do need to locate, or the applicant needs to provide for us a clear description of what relief is required at this point to complete the project that he intends to complete.
And just, and just for the use of the board, there was a letter dated February 5 of 2021 that I think is a part of your packet. And I believe that in that, the applicant indicated that they eliminated the request for the pool and the sheds. And then he goes on to discuss what I believe are the remaining portions of the application. So that might be of use to the board.
Yeah.
Could you just mention what the dimensions were?
Sure, sure.
It's very interesting.
Sure. What he mentions is that there is, he's proposing a 176-square-foot-covered porch to an eastern front yard setback of 22.7 feet at the southeastern corner of the porch and 24.9 feet at the northeast corner of the porch where 25 feet is required. So essentially, he's saying there's a triangular portion of the porch that needs the variance.
Yep.
Then he mentions that with respect to the garage, a 65-foot-by-12-foot-square-foot-attached garage addition to a northern rear yard setback of 18 feet where 25 feet is required. So that's what they're seeking for the garage, that the proposed five-foot garage extension is an extension to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. And I think that's where we go to what the building inspector had looked at and forwarded the letter to you about.
So on the agenda, we've got the front yard, but it was decided that that wasn't necessary, is that right?
Let me go to the, I'm just going to the agenda.
Well, I could read it to you.
Right, so he took away the request for the sheds, so that would take away number one.
Right.
Took away the pool, which would be number four. So you're just left with the covered front porch to an eastern front yard and the garage addition. Those are the only two remaining.
The direction of the garage is to an eastern front yard setback of 20 feet where 25 feet is required. It has nothing to do with the back.
No.
So which is it?
I think it needs to match a diagram that was submitted.
Right. So he had attached, let me see if I can find the one that, there's one that was stamped that I've seen stamped March 26th of 2021. And if that didn't make it to the board packet, I'll follow up with Ms. Allen. And in that, what he shows is the variance request for both the garage and the porch.
I have one stamped May 10th. That would be after the March one. Be the latest one we have, I believe.
Okay.
Does everybody have that one?
Yes, I have the May 10th one as well.
It's pretty clear to me, this is the final one.
May 10th?
May 10th.
Did we get that?
Yeah, it was May 10th with an attached letter from the applicant.
Barrett, I do have John Bennett's hand up, if you want me to admit him. I know that you said that it's a work session, so your call.
Let's just clarify our paperwork first.
Okay.
Time's in, we're happy to hear from John.
The May 10th is the most recent. It's consistent with the one from March in terms of what is marked for the porch and the garage.
John Bennett is the neighbor in this case.
Yes. For the time being, we can have the applicant clarify which drawing we should be looking at at the public hearing and the precise relief requested. I think the board's generally of the impression that maybe a minor variance request and acceptable, but I think we need to match the variance request with his survey work.
Make sure the May 10th is the one we want.
You want to let John in, Antoinette?
Yes, I can do so.
Hello?
John, did you want to speak to 85 Hildreth Street?
Yes, just very quickly. I just continue to be confused by this. It's like this three-chord motif, this, I, you know, I do this for a living, so I'm pretty good at following the bouncing ball, but I don't know. First of all, you still have two requests for relief there on the notice. I thought that we're gonna go off, number one. Number two, I don't know, this front porch may not be the worst thing in the world, but there's been a drawing. What's the volume of it? What does it look like? Has he submitted anything? He's just asking for a variance for a front porch, but we don't know volumetrically what it is? What does it look like? What is the style of it? I, you know, I mean, I know it's not, that's, that should be part of his variance request.
He asked for a rendering of precisely what he would be providing to the ARB. So I think that's-
Okay, but he hasn't done that yet.
I don't believe he's clarified that that's what he submitted. I have seen the rendering, but I don't know if it's the same one that he's presenting later to the ARB, and I just want to make sure.
What makes you think-
That's part of your relief, because you're asking not, he's now encroaching into a required front yard. And it may not be the worst thing in the world, but I'd like to see it, that's all. He's encroaching into a front yard, both, you know, from a lateral point of, I mean, you know, from a linear point of view, but also from a volumetric point of view. And typically, you want to see that.
You think that it even goes to the ARB? Can't the building department say it's just the front porch and let it go?
No. Why, Susan?
Well, I think they might do stuff. No, I know, John. I think it's been done before, maybe, if they think it's not of consequence. They are the choosers, no?
It's a change to the elevation of the building, which has to go to you because it needs a variance relief, not-
I get that part.
Okay, but it also has to go to the Architectural Review Board. And if somebody's on my street is giving out building permits for a change-
I'm sure they'll take care of it, right.
No, no, but that's a strange question, number one. Number two, the garage, I don't know what he's doing now. It sees, he wanted some rear yard relief. I mean, I might have a problem with the garage, because he's further extending it out. He parks all over the street. He says he needs an extension for the garage. Maybe he should park his cars in the garage and in the driveway. And why not do it towards the rear if that's what he needs? So, anyway, but that's more for, I just, I have a harder time following. He's been at it for six months, and, you know, every time he puts something in new, it's probable that he has to renotice these things. It's not just, oh, I diddled around something, now this is what I want. And I don't know volumetrically what the porch looks like. I may not have a problem with that, maybe-
You showed a picture of the porch somewhere else on your street, which is somewhere in that file. I have trouble with the garage, because I could never quite get the dimensions on this thing.
I mean, it's a pretty minimal setback, 25 feet, which are, you know, most of the houses are backed off more than 25 feet, including mine on Jennings and mine on Hildreth. I mean, if he wants to, maybe he should could explore pushing that, even though it'll be closer to my house in the back, explore it, you know, from a streetscape point of view, adding on to the rear of it, if indeed it's even appropriate. But I'd like to see visually what this stuff is gonna look like. I mean, I can't remember ever coming in to ask you guys for setback relief without showing what the structure is going to look like volumetrically.
Well, the contention now is that he doesn't have to ask for relief in the front of the garage, but in the back-
That makes no sense at all, because it's a 25-foot minimum setback in that zone.
If he put any numbers on these things, it'd be really helpful to me, but I see very few. 25.8, he's got 25 feet in the front.
Why is he asking for attached garage to eastern front yard setback of 20 feet?
I don't know if that's, I agree with you. How about it? I don't know. I find every week it's different, and I think that the drawings don't really give the numbers, like, am I supposed to add up? I can't tell what I should add up, because I don't know what's real. But the last contention was that they didn't actually need relief in the front. And if I see this one thing, 25.8 feet to something that comes near the garage, and with this variance request of 35 square feet that they left on in the front, but now they're not asking for it. I don't know, you're right. It's confuse a cat.
So why don't we just table this until the public hearing, and we'll have the applicant who's not here tonight clarify.
I think he was here. He was. He, I believe that he was-
You're right. I do have an Andrew Spritzer, as in trendy.
Oh, well, terrific. Does he want to-
The real meeting?
His hand just went up. Would you like me to admit?
Sure, I mean, yeah, it's unfair to be talking about his application and not let him weigh in.
Okay, Mr. Spritzer, when you get in, if you could turn your camera on and unmute yourself as well, please.
Hi there.
How are you, Andrew? Could you clarify for us the variance request and the survey and renderings that we should be looking at?
Sure. I submitted a packet a week ago that had a letter, it had Chris's, Chris Talbot's letter, two letters, I believe, that the first one stated, it had the, that it was a legal renovation in 1968 by the previous owner, that nothing has been done ever since then. We have done nothing. There's a laundry room, and then there's about six or seven feet of closets and storage. So it's not, it's not, there isn't enough to park a car there, first of all, and there isn't really enough storage, because it's been chopped up. It's not just the laundry room, it's laundry room and closets. And I think that Mr. Talbot, in his letter, stated that. And then he said, I think in this last sentence, he says, "and I find it to be undersized."
Yeah, no, so let me ask you this, Andrew, because you're saying it's chopped up. The only thing that Chris Talbot, the building inspector, referenced was a seven-by-12 room in the back of the garage. What is to the east of the seven-by-12 room?
East, there are closets as well, about five feet of closets. And then, and then the garage. So there isn't a full garage to park or to really do much of anything there. That's why we were asking for the five feet. Now, the reason, there's this, it's been the same survey, we just cleaned it up, so, because after Chris was there, we wanted to make it very clear that there was only a laundry room and closets. That's it. That's all that is there. And the northern line is the rear yard, because even though our front door faces Hildreth, that's not considered our front space. It is actually on Jennings, because they take the smallest, the smallest dimension becomes your front yard on a, on a corner lot, so-
When using your rear yard.
So the rear yard is the north. And that is where we have 18 feet, where we need 25. On the street, we have the 25-foot setback, which is required. So it doesn't affect the street setback at all onto Jennings.
It's all, Jennings and Hildreth are the front yard.
Okay, so the relief that you're asking for is 18 feet from the rear yard where 25 is required.
Right. And it's just a continuation of the pre-existing, non-conforming structure, which was conforming when it was built, but now is not conforming. And the neighbor to our north, we couldn't even see that, because there's plantings all to the north there that completely obliterate their view of it. But the street would have no, there's the setback completely. And even with the extension, we can fit four cars on the driveway. So there's not a parking issue, and there's not a setback on the street issue. And that has never changed. It's always been the same request of 35 square feet, because half of the request is in our building envelope.
Could I just, where the, there was a laundry, when were the closets? It's-
Closets were built in 1968.
They were.
Right. And Chris stated that they had linoleum, and it was all part of what would be-
So you're telling us that you don't need the garage? So why are you extend, why are we giving you, why are we extending it?
No, I'm saying, I don't have enough for a garage.
That's right, and you haven't since 1968, is that correct?
Well, I haven't been there since, I only got here last-
Have you been, have you had room for a car in that garage?
No.
So what is, what are we talking about?
Wanting to have that-
You have 21 feet? You can get a car 21 feet in a garage?
No, but it's not 21 feet, because it's seven plus the six for closets, which are already there.
That's what's not showing on the diagram, Dan. That's what I was asking about, that Chris identified the seven-by-12 room, which is the laundry, but he did not identify the six-foot closet, which is to the east of that, which is part of the garage, which is why instead of 21 feet, they only have 15 or 16 feet of depth.
Right.
Okay, so they added closet space inside the garage besides the seven and 12.
Right, back in 1968. Yeah, that was in 1968, so, I mean, nothing's changed since we bought it a year ago, not even a year ago.
Well, that's what's confusing, because in 1968, you said you asked for seven by 12, but you didn't get, you actually have set 13 by 12.
Right.
And that was what I was always confused about. Why did it say seven by 12 when it was, 13 by 12 was what was built? What was in that 13 by 12, six feet of closet?
Right, and I think, I think the building-
The building department is okay with that, but now you'd like to pick up the five feet so you can get a car back in the garage again.
Right. And some place to put, because I have no place to put anything, you know? So the outdoor furniture, you know, I gotta cram in a bike, and it just, we came from a big house, we're downsizing.
Yeah, I have no problem with the five-feet extension, and it's not, you're talking about a portion of the front of the garage, because the portion of it complies.
Right. And it'll look exactly like what's there. We're not altering the construction or making it look completely, it's gonna be exactly as it is now, just moved.
Andrew, so Thursday's meeting, what we need is a clear survey showing the exact relief requested, the 18 feet off of the rear yard, no relief on the front yard, as you said, a rendering of the, so that we can see as John-
I found that renderings of-
Yeah, we have that survey.
Yeah, we have the renderings. And the survey, the survey's always been the same, but I gave you another one on May 10th, which says exactly what we're looking for.
We have that one.
It's very clear. I think it's-
It's not clear to me. It doesn't have numbers on it that anyone can figure out. Where is the length?
Do you have the May 10th one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it shows 18 feet from the rear yard, 27 feet to the front. It's got all the measurements on it. Shows five-feet extension to the garage.
Can you ask?
Where's the 18 feet? I don't see the, 19 to the steps.
Okay, it's the same survey, but we got a new one by May 10th.
I have May 10th.
So Jeff, do you have the May 10th survey? Does it seem clear enough to you?
I do have the May 10th survey, and looking at it, what it shows is, was just mentioned, is from the lot line, running toward the garage, there's 18 feet, and then it has 12 feet for the garage itself, but it's divided by a 12, a seven-foot section and a five-foot section. And then for the porch, it has the dimensions of the porch with a gridded portion showing what the variance request is for, which is a triangular section. So that's the May 10th survey that we received, that the board received.
You could write a, could you write a decision off of this survey?
It depends on what the decision of the board is, but the survey is clear to me in terms of what it shows dimension-wise, if that's the question, it does. It shows the dimensions.
Julia, do you have the survey that we're going to, the May 10th survey?
Not in front of me at this moment.
Okay, so that, that's something we just all need to look at to see. I mean, yes, I looked at it, and I thought that the variance request was somewhat minor. But do you also have, Jeff, a rendering of the-
Let me see, the letter, I was just looking at it. There was a, let's see, in the, there's a letter that was submitted on April 7th, in which the gentleman indicated he was submitting floor plans and also elevations of the porch. So the board would have that. And I'm just, but you had asked if there's a rendering. I'm just looking to see if we also have a separate rendering.
There is an elevation.
There's an elevation.
Not a rendering.
But, but isn't that the ARB? They get, they get, yeah, there it is. They get, they get, yeah, there it is. No, that's, that's very old. That was the old
Well, I don't have a new one. I don't know what you're all talking about.
That, that was submitted
That's the problem. There are all these things, there are thousands of pieces of paper, and most of them I find unintelligible, but that's me. Blame it on me.
I think the problem is when, 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 when the, when the board asks for something, I respond. And I say to Ms. Allen, can we get rid of the things that are
No, you can't.
I know. So then you end up with everything.
But I don't have whatever it is for the porch. And I do keep pretty good files. I mean, I have a lot of things.
We do have elevation drawing of the porch.
Oh, is this it?
Right.
Yes.
No, this doesn't have a porch. This is without the porch.
That was, that was the very first thing.
Are you going to submit to the ARB?
Excuse me?
Are you going to submit to the ARB?
Yes.
Okay, so the chances are very good that the variance request for the front porch will be granted. We would like to request that for us, we see the rendering that you will ultimately be providing to the ARB. So we're on the same page as the ARB.
We, we did ask for this several months back.
Right.
From the very beginning, one of the very first requests that we made was whatever materials you were going to be presenting to the ARB, that we should also have the opportunity to see that. And then the following month, we got some additional materials. So it's not a new request that Mr. Greenwald's making.
But I thought that that rendering, which was a digital rendering from the architect, was sufficient.
No, we just want to make sure that as we go from one board to the next, that we're approving the same thing.
Right.
And I, and I think we said that several months back, too.
And I thought that that rendering that I gave you was sufficient.
Right, but that's not, but that's not what you're going to submit to the ARB. I don't think.
You know, I was waiting to have the ARB tell me what they needed specifically.
We just want to, we just want to be consistent. I mean, this is going in the right direction. We're not finding that your, your variance requests are substantial. We just want to stay organized.
Okay.
So for the public hearing, if you could just we'll look through our files, but if you could just update exactly the variance request, you know, as it currently stands, the two requests that you're making, clear surveys to show the dimensions of the variance request, a rendering of the porch. And that's it. We'll be fine.
Just to review, you have a survey which is clear. Which is that, and I gave eight copies, so
The May tenth survey is clear.
Okay, so that's May tenth, you're saying that's the survey we're looking at?
Right.
Okay.
And then you have Chris, Chris Talbot's letter stating what's in there.
Yes.
And I had given you renderings. Is that rendering sufficient or not sufficient?
Not sufficient. We want to see exactly what, what you would be submitting to the ARB.
Okay.
Can I also say, but hasn't our conversation tonight, which is a work session, so we're just hammering out some details, also indicated that the letter that we got from the building inspector oh, didn't actually include the square footage that was related to the closet, which is also added to the confusion about trying to figure out what we've got in front of us, correct?
Yes.
So I will go back to Mr. Talbot and ask him to clarify that.
We don't, we don't need to, you clarify.
I don't think we need to. I think we've all done the math together.
Closet. And that, that's why the garage is short. Otherwise, the garage seems lengthy enough.
Right.
If I may, I heard the word eighteen. Relief to eighteen, look at your notice. You don't see eighteen there anywhere.
Right.
So what's, your notice is faulty.
Right.
It's talking about variance, rear yard variance, which I'm totally confused now, even though I do this for a living, to eighteen feet. You won't see the word, the letter, the number eighteen anywhere on your notice.
And I was looking for the eighteen feet behind the garage because that's not what I thought we were talking about, are we?
Yeah, number one, number two, number two, the front yard is Jennings and Hiller. What the code does is says if you have a corner lot, you define your rear yard by being opposite the shortest of the front yards, plural.
Exactly.
Well, who said exactly?
Well, so your point, John, is that actually in the relief requested, there's no rear yard relief requested.
Yeah, it's front yard relief, but then there's a, somebody says something about eighteen feet and there's no notice for eighteen feet. I, I am, this is, I'm pretty good at this. It's, again, I don't know what's going on here.
Well, to your point, there's no request for rear yard setback relief, and that's the request actually being made.
So it's not noticed. So how do you proceed next, this next Thursday?
The, the building department is the one that writes the request.
They can be wrong.
Jeffrey, do we need to renotice this because there's no rear yard relief requested?
And where is the
Are you asking for seven feet of relief? Because that's the relief that's being requested, which brings the dimension to eighteen feet from the rear yard.
Which, what, the northerly lot line?
The northerly lot line.
Okay, so where's the request for relief to Hildreth?
If he's asking for seven feet of relief.
Sorry.
I'm not asking for relief off of Hildreth.
Right, we understand. You did initially, but you're not now.
That was when we, no, no, that's when we were asking for a eight-foot, I believe we asked for a ten-foot extension to the garage. And then there was, that would have been a problem for Hildreth Street. So we, we brought it in line so that there was no issue with the Hildreth Street setback of twenty-five feet.
Right, so that eliminated your request number three. Because that's what you were asking for there, one hundred and twenty square foot attached garage addition to an eastern front yard setback of twenty feet, where twenty-five feet is required. So you don't need that.
No, and that was, and that was eliminated.
Right, but you didn't, you've never requested the rear yard relief with the rear yard that's opposite Jennings.
It's not in here.
You know, I, when I was at the building department, I asked them for that, they wrote up what they gave to you. And the survey showed that it was an eighteen-foot rear yard setback.
So Jeffrey, my question, Jeffrey, is does he need to renotice this because it was never requested that the work called for a rear yard setback relief? I mean, the relief requested is not correct. It's not, it's not only that we were eliminating certain relief requested, it's that there was never a request for relief from the rear yard.
Sure, I'm going to need to check the code to see what setback requirements there are. And then it would presumably need to be renoticed if there's a rear yard setback that wasn't previously requested.
Is it, Andrew, let's, we'll let the building inspector get back to you in the next couple of days.
If he didn't. So I think what the gentleman's saying is he never received a denial based on a rear yard setback issue.
Right.
But the building department doesn't issue denials per se. It's not like, yeah.
Well, I, I think that if there's an application made to build something, the building department would review it. And I certainly appreciate that, but I think that they should also have the opportunity to respond to that.
And then, can we clean up the notice?
Yes, we do need to, okay, so you'll discuss with the building department whether or not it needs to be renoticed, Jeffrey?
Sure.
Okay. I'll be back to you shortly, Andrew.
Thank you.
Like for that confusion.
Before we move on to, I just need to sign out and sign back in again. I'm having trouble with my screens here. I'll just go ahead and I'll be in and I'll be back in a minute.
Okay, we're going to move on to number three oh nine nine, JNC Halsey Neck LLC, thirteen eighty-four Metal Lane. Why don't we wait for Julia to return?
Interestingly.
You're back.
Well, I don't know, it might not last.
Sounds good.
You look fine to us. I don't know what you're seeing.
I'm seeing like a little movie strip and it's, it's near impossible to see everybody, but now
Strip for us is on the top. Where's yours?
It's the only thing I've got, so I'm just trying to
Chair, while she's doing that, I, John Bennett and I put back as an attendee because we were done and he's raised his hand again. Is he, did you want him to speak on this one? Should I let him in now or?
Not, not yet. On eighteen eighty-four, no, not yet. We, I just, it's a work session. I want to see if we have questions based upon John's presentation at the public hearing.
Okay, I can, I can see everybody. Thank you.
Okay, so case number three oh nine nine, thirteen eighty-four Metal Lane. This was first heard of our public hearing and it was a comprehensive presentation by counsel for the applicant. Do we have any questions or concerns or additional information that we might need?
Heard a little details on this one, right?
Jeffrey, could you just start us off and remind us what village code provision we are applying in this case?
Sure, what they're talking about is actually a variance from the coastal erosion hazard area as opposed to a typical variance request. So the criteria, whereas I read into the record on the, on the last date, and I'll send around a memo again for, so that the board has it. And I also think Mr. Bennett reviewed those as well. So there's separate and different criteria that you apply.
Okay, just to remind us of where we left off at the public hearing, I think Chick highlighted that there might be two conditions in in the need, in the request for coastal erosion hazard lines, variants that need to be met by the applicant, one of which is that the applicant must show that there's not a conforming location for their planned project and that the, the project calls for the minimum variance request necessary to overcome the practical difficulty. Is that a pretty good summary, Jeffrey, of, of the two criterion that in addition to others need to be met?
I agree. Yes. It is, and I think that is a fair summary.
So that's my question. I mean, I've heard the comprehensive and, and detailed presentation, but what I didn't hear was, was any any real, I guess, information that addressed whether there was a conforming location on this property for the project or whether it was the minimum relief necessary. So do any other board members want to weigh in on that? Or are they convinced that, that those two criteria are met?
I don't believe either have even been addressed.
I thought that I thought what they were doing was a big improvement over what was there.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that it isn't a big improvement over what's there. What, what I'm asking is that's not the
Criteria.
That's not the zoning code criterion. And there's no place in the zoning code where it says if the applicant proves that what they're building is better than what's there, then a variance should be granted. What the zoning code does say is that the applicant must show that there's no conforming location and that's the minimum relief necessary. And so I just wanted us to address those two points. But, but I agree with you, Dan, it's, it may be
I don't know if they've addressed that, that, those questions.
I don't think, I don't think they have. And I also, I find saying, you know, they're gonna, if they intend to build a new house, what's there is going to be gone. So just knocking it down, would you say maybe that's an improvement? But I don't really want to go, I mean, what we're really talking about is what's going to go forward? What's going to be on there that's not going to be bad for the wetlands? And the question is, could they do it a way where they wouldn't have to have this relief? Isn't that the question?
Susan, it's the coastal erosion hazard area.
Oh, the hazard area. Oh, right. Well, to me, I'm from Ohio, Chick, forgive me. I really am. I never saw the ocean until I was fourteen. So the coastal hazard area, seriously.
You are now. I love it.
I know. I went to a lot of lakes, trust me, big ones. So so once there's the offending structures that are old, where that wasn't considered offending when they were built, are gone, then what do we have to deal with? That's how I'm looking at it. And is there a way not to invade the coastal erosion hazard area, as Chick likes to say?
Important distinction.
Yeah, no, that is a distinction. I understand you and I actually have looked at it. It's just what you call it could be a problem for me, but I'm on your case now.
I had made some remarks at the last meeting. I don't know if the applicant had planned to address them in any way. I had read the letter from Lee Wisher of the Woods Hole Group that is dated April nineteenth. That seems to be what they're relying on. And it really is kind of along the lines that this will improve things, that the beach is stable, you know, there's all those cross-sections and very good scientific information. I had indicated that, you know, right on page three of the report, it did acknowledge that the walkways and pedestrian access have deteriorated the dune as well as the structure. So it's clear that structures do impact dune areas and that's what's happening now. And of course, the purpose of the SEHA line is to protect shoreline features. And then Jeff Blinkoff and I had talked about chapter forty-nine dash nineteen D and those criteria that were just discussed, which I agree, I don't think that has really been addressed. So those were some of the thoughts from the last meeting and some for tonight.
And now what?
I guess, you know, we actually can address those, those criteria. You know, I mean, do we provide the applicant with more opportunity to address those criteria that, you know, we are expressing our opinion that have not been addressed and need to be addressed?
I think that's fair.
And I'll just remind the board that we did start looking at the cross-sections of the structure and the magnitude of the structure remaining in the SEHA line. It was the pool, it was a sub-level, a level above that. And so, you know, the, the application was clear what's being proposed. But we really haven't seen anything that argues why it couldn't be conforming location.
So I think we're ready for next week.
I think so. Does anybody else have any other questions, concerns, comments before we move on? Okay, so moving on to case number three one oh one, which is three oh three First Neck Lane, David and Holly, Chair. I know we have revised drawings, you know, perhaps we wait and listen to the applicant's presentation, but it seems like they revised their their application significantly. And do we have any questions or comments? Did we have a chance?
I have a question which has to do with, the C of O is for a garage apartment. And And I don't, if there's no garage, how's that work? I don't know. I'm asking, is that in the is that there are accessory? I mean, that really is what the C of O is. I don't know how it should I take that literally or not? Because they've taken away most of the garage and added space that they claim is kind of a poolhouse, although I have my bugaboo is the office with the bathroom.
The structure is still there. The structure is still there. It was a garage.
That's correct, but it was assumed that that there would be a garage with an apartment.
We're gonna do new drawings with the kitchen back on the second floor, so that would be like a second floor. So we do we do? We didn't get any new information from there, did we?
No.
Well, I think the question Susan has, which which, you know, is a concern of mine as well, is if the C of O says it's it's a garage with an accessory apartment and they eliminate the garage, is that a concern to this board? It's no longer what the C of O says it is. Version, you know, of garages to whatever use people want to make of those garages.
But the building is still there. That's what counts to me.
But the use of the building, also they're asking to expand it.
They're not asking for a used variance.
Well, maybe they should.
No, we don't grant used variances. We never have. Use variance has to do with the property, not with the building on the property.
Chair, I have Bailey's hand up if that if you want me to admit her.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
So after the last meeting, we did file revised architectural plans on May 13. I dropped them off. They were in the file before your noon deadline. What we did do was relocate the garage, the kitchen back up to the second floor. We eliminated any expansion of the first floor footprint of the accessory structure. And now basically, the only request for relief is for that 183 square foot of expansion on the second floor, which would allow them to enlarge the the living space within that apartment. We tried to, you know, address most of the comments of the board as best we could. Again, no expansion on the first floor whatsoever. We're keeping the same amount of space on the first floor that's already been used as essentially accessory uses. And we are keeping the kitchen on the second floor so that the accessory apartment is contained to that second floor. So Frank, the architect, will be on the meeting next week if you have any questions for him at that time. But I just wanted to let you know that we did submit all those plans. It's again, a total of 183 square feet of proposed expansion on the second floor.
Jeff, my question, Jeffrey, is really for you. Is is there relief that needs to be requested that has not been requested because they're eliminating garage when the C of O says garage with accessory apartment?
Their argument is that they're not changing the use of it, that they're maintaining consistency with it, and then they would need to follow up with the building department as to the other issue. Whether or not the board agrees that the variance they seek meets with the criteria is up to the board.
So is our question whether or not we still believe that on the first floor there exists a quote unquote garage?
Well, what they're claiming it is is a garage and office with bath. That still seems to be, I see that Bailey, I apologize. I don't know your last name, or I would refer to you as that. But I believe in their drawings, they're still saying there's a garage there.
There'll be a storage area. Essentially, they're just flipping the bedroom, the office space that everyone's calling a bedroom and it's not with the garage space. It's all permitted accessory uses on that first floor. It's it's nothing that requires relief from this board. The only request for relief and we put it in a letter dated May 13 will be related to the proposed expansion on the second floor of the structure, everything within that accessory apartment only. So we have eliminated any expansion on the first floor, so there's no relief required within that first floor.
That's what we're trying to figure out, whether or not there might be relief that you need that you have not requested because you've eliminated the garage on the first floor. I understand your point of view is that you have not, you're not doing anything that requires relief. What I'm asking the board members and council is, is there a an additional request for relief that might be necessary according to our zoning code? Because it says a garage with an accessory apartment, so I'm asking the board members if if they want to weigh in on whether or not this still looks like a garage with an accessory apartment. Regardless of whether or not the dimensional requirements are are in need of a variance.
If like we can try and confirm that they're comfortable with it.
Dan, does it still look like a garage with an accessory apartment if they move the garage up to the second floor?
They move the kitchen to the second floor.
I'm sorry, if they move the kitchen.
You know, if they're eliminating the garage, you're changing the C of O. It will no longer be a garage or an accessory apartment. It's just going to be an accessory apartment, which to me is a house. So then you got two houses on a property. So that's why I'm a dilemma on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
What I would ask for the opportunity to do is let me prepare a memo for the board, but also this is something I will go back to the building department about. It would seem to me this is a building department determination initially as to what they were denying in terms of the application having been made. So I have to go back to them. These are new drawings. And I will see if the building departments had the chance to review them.
Okay, excellent. Let's do that. So can we move on to case number 3103, which is 46 John Street?
Sure.
And I think here the applicant did submit a letter that they were eliminating the screen porch on the eastern side yard and are now requesting relief only for the swimming pool.
Yes. And I wouldn't I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Kevin, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
More of the screen porch is gone.
And Susan?
I'm not sure. I'm still thinking.
I mean, you have plenty of time. They're going to present to the next public hearing. I'm just getting a, you know, a sense.
You know, I feel like if we, I mean, it could be done. They have a pool, correct? They already have a pool.
Yes, yes. They have a smaller.
That's the part that throws me off a little here. You know, it's not. So if the standards are the, I mean, what is the reason for it? They want a bigger pool? It's not according to code? That's where I'm coming from. I have to look at it again. It's tight circumstances in that street, though. So I'm if I need to look at it more.
Okay, we can wait for the the public hearing and then we'll hear from the the architect and I believe that's who's presenting here.
I can confirm that what we're talking about, the side porch is gone. The pool request remains. What has happened in the in that revision to the front porch at the front of the house? Originally, they had said that they were going to take that away. Are they still planning about taking that away? I that was murky to me when I was trying to prepare for tonight. Does anybody know the answer to that? I think the letter from the architect just said they're removing the screen porch, right? So it doesn't say anything about what you're talking about. So at the front of the house, they were talking minimizing the front step porch area. But I don't know.
If they remove the screened in porch, I think it would straighten out that parking in the front, too.
Right, but are they still, but
So I'd like to see the new drawing with, I'd like to see like a new survey, a new drawing with the with the screen porch removed. And if they read how they are reconfiguring the parking then.
I don't think they are, maybe. They already, they don't have to, do they? Wasn't that all about the porch?
They just said they were limiting.
So I'm sorry, there's a note that's come up on my screen from the architect that says the minimize the front porch is is still there. So they're making a way.
They're just gonna make it conform?
I have her hand up if you want me to admit.
Go ahead, Antoinette.
I'm waiting to get in there. Let's see. See you, Lou. When you come in, just unmute yourself and turn the camera on, please.
Oh, hi. Good evening. Just wanted to tell you the the front porch, that big porch is still going to be reduced, therefore minimize the amount of nonconforming in the front. And the that's the that's the question. I'm just answering it.
That's great. And if you could submit just a new drawing showing the removal of the eastern porch and the reduction of the front as you're describing here, that would be very helpful for the public.
We've been waiting for the surveyor survey for the past three weeks. And he said he mailed it out yesterday, so hopefully I'll get it tomorrow into the building department.
Great. I know you're trying. It's hard, I know.
Yeah, at least I will. If he if he doesn't get it, at least I will get my site plan ready.
So the front piece, the plan has remained the same?
Yeah, the big ground will become a small little particle.
Okay.
And the screened in porch, we do not need variance. We're going to greatly reduce it to make sure it meets the setback.
Okay. So the request remains for the for the swimming pool to be enlarged?
It's only just 2.1 feet, and we do have quite a bit of nonconforming here.
Okay.
And it's in the ground. It's in the backyard.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to new cases. We have our first new case, which is 51 Pond Lane. And I think we're probably just gonna wait to to hear the applicant's presentation, you know, for this. I think, Ken, you're you're presenting for this. Did you want to say anything about 51 Pond Lane?
Good evening, everyone. Actually, I am not presenting for 51 Pond Lane. Hold on, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Who is presenting for 51 Pond Lane, if you know?
Yep, hold on. Give me eight seconds.
I can also help out just with clarifying.
So who's who is?
You're with me?
You know what? Excuse me, I have a Georgia Greer key and Patrick Cleary are both here. Patrick's for the board. So you want me to admit him, please?
Sure, yeah, admit him. I'm right now. I'm just trying to to give everybody a heads up as to who's making the the presentation next Thursday night. I don't want to go into the presentation tonight, but but I would like a heads up on who's representing the applicant.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So Ken Gray, chairman, if I if I may just respond. I am not representing the applicants. I have not been asked to. My understanding is Keith Brown, counsel from Brown and Altman, is going to be handling this on a pro bono basis, representing the the museum. Mr. Voorhees, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And I believe, Ken, you also wrote a letter to the chairman after the last work session just to help clarify the roles that I am not in a review capacity on this for the board. Our firm was asked to help with the application, so of course it would be inappropriate for me to review it. And that's why Mr. Cleary was appointed by the Board of Trustees. And Ken, I believe, provided a letter to that effect. So I would not be in any way in a review capacity. However, we did provide some documents on behalf of the application. So when this comes up next week, I will drop off participant, recognized at that point. Keith Brown was honestly just retained. He is watching this meeting. He's familiar with the application. If we need to update anything, certainly because he was just retained, he was not on the original application forms. And he will be quarterbacking the presentation.
And do we know that he'll be ready for next Thursday?
Yes.
I mean, Pat Cleary is here. Pat, do you want to say anything about the application at this stage?
Chair, he actually, I don't know what happened to him. He's not on and he's not in the attendees either. Maybe something happened to his computer.
So who's going to be representing for our board? So Chick, you're not, you say Mr. Brown will?
No, let me say it again. I'm glad Pat's back, but quite honestly, Dan, in prior cases, you know that I advise on wetlands and sometimes coastal erosion hazard. I have not represented the board on standard variances. And I really can't remember too many special exceptions. So this doesn't exception and variance. The board did not always in a review capacity representing the board. Just in case you wanted Cleary was appointed by the village board, and he will also represent the planning board in review of the planning board application. So I just want to make that clear. Pat Cleary is your consultant at your request. Brown is the attorney for the applicant.
Okay.
Is Mr. Gray still there?
Yes, Susan.
I am.
I was watching the town meeting regarding this application. And there was a lot of discussion about how all the agreements between the town and the village in terms of who owns the land and who does what, all have to be redone. Is that and therefore I'm wondering why are we doing this now if that's the case? Do you know?
I I'm unfamiliar or not aware, I should say, of any situation that documents have to be redone. My understanding is the town owns the land. And they have purchased it with certain certain monies, restricted funds. And there's an intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village. And it calls on the village to have a a license agreement. I don't have it in front of me. I apologize. But but an operating or a license agreement with the not-for-profit that's going to run the facility, that document has not been signed off on. But it's in the development stage. It was in the development stage when counsel Brian Egan was a counsel to the village, and it needs to be moved forward. But I'm unaware of any comments that things need to be redone.
Okay, but.
The only comment I have is strictly from a zoning point of view. It seems like they're trying to put an awful lot on an awful, on three quarters of an acre. Why?
Let's defer to and and see their present and listen to their presentation before we.
So I would. So I had an opportunity to speak with the chairman earlier today, and there is one question that's fundamental to next week, which is the classification of the use itself. So as you know, I've come into this sort of late in the game. I did not have the full set of site plans, which I I did not have the full set of site plans, which I received this afternoon, so I prepared a memorandum that was based on the prior plan, so that has to be amended. But there's a fundamental question, which is, the applicant's classified, the applicant has classified the use as a museum. There's a separate use in your code, which may also apply. And that's the philanthropic fraternal, social or educational institutional use. And that has, that's also a special permit, also permissible in the R20 zoning district, and it has its own criteria. Some of that criteria relates to historic structures, which the site certainly is or was. Certain, some of that criteria relates to outdoor activities, which are proposed on this site. So maybe that use is a more appropriate use. However, the, the, the minimum lot area for that use is three acres. And this particular lot is, is, as you know, eight tenths of an acre or something like that. It would not comply. So we have a use issue that has to be resolved, whether it's the museum use or this other philanthropic use. And I think that's.
How is the entity incorporated? Are they a 501(c)(3)? Because I, I looked at the paperwork, I wasn't able to determine that.
That's a good question. I don't know that answer. I haven't, I haven't seen the documentation to that effect, but I don't know that it's not.
Okay.
Mark?
Well, I think we'd like to know that.
Will we go on?
Yes.
After the last meeting in the next issue of the Southampton Press, there was an article regarding this, which was very unfancied at this point. I'm sure a lot of people read that article. I had the wrong impression about why we didn't hear it last month. The article was filled with, with fiction, to say the, to say the least. I don't know whether you all read, I, I know Mark Critic, he and I discussed it.
And, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, just, just to be clear, I had also had the opportunity to see the article. And the fact of the matter is that the reason the board could not proceed was that the board did not have jurisdiction. It had nothing to do with anything this board did or didn't do. In order for the board to have jurisdiction, a notice needs to be published in the village newspaper. The village, the village staff did everything they were supposed to do. I've had the chance to confirm that. They sent out the notice, they couldn't, the newspaper confirmed receipt of the notice. And for whatever reason, it wasn't published. There was a mistake. But it was nothing that anybody on the village side did that was in error. They did what their job was and they sent the notice out. But for the board to proceed without jurisdiction would have been improper. So as far as I can tell, there was no other reason that the board from proceeding and the, and the board could not. It was, this board was ready to go, but you couldn't proceed without proper notice. And, and nobody at the village had any fault in the, in it not being noticed.
Nobody's blaming the village, the fault of the press for not checking their facts and checking their informants to see if there's truth in what they're being told.
So thank you, Kevin, for, for clarifying that and thank you, Jeffrey.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I, can I just jump in? And Jeff, I just want to springboard on what Mr. Blinkoff was just saying. Member Kevin Goodery? I, I apologize. I apologize. The, the issue that Mr. Blinkoff was speaking of was not the article that was published in late April concerning what happened. Mr. Blinkoff was speaking of the public notice that is required to be published in a local newspaper. The village and the village building department took all steps necessary to notify and request that the notice be published. And notwithstanding the fact that the request went in, for some reason unbeknownst to us, the, there, there was a breakdown in communication in the newspapers' side that they never published it. So Mr. Blinkoff was not talking about the article that people are upset about. Mr. Blinkoff was speaking about the fact that they failed to publish the notification that the village requested and was going, and was paying for to be published.
My annoyance, my annoyance is not with the villagers at the Southampton Press.
Understood, but again, I just wanted to make a clarification between the article, which everybody is upset about, and the, the, the simple process of printing a public notice, which the village requested them to do in a timely fashion, and for whatever reason, it didn't get published. That's the only reason why the zoning board could not go forward. And Jeff, I apologize if I'm stepping over my line. I just wanted to clarify the distinction between the two issues.
Sure.
Chair, I just want to let you know again, I, I've been getting a lot of Q and A. Did you want me to admit these people? You want to wait for a presentation at the public hearing?
Well, sure. This is, this is just our work session. I'd like to hear the complete, you know, presentation as, as presented by, I guess it's Keith Brown, who's, who's, who's going to be presenting on behalf of the applicant. So this is just our work session to, you know, see if we have any initial concerns or questions, but otherwise, let's wait for the public hearing next Thursday night.
Okay, one of the, one of the things in the chat though was to clarify that this is a chartered museum. So I don't know if that makes any difference in any of your questions, but was one of the things that was mentioned.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll update the memo that will provide you with some of those background issues that you can question the applicant with when, after they make the presentation. But I think that presentation is important for all of us to better understand the project.
Well, don't you think we should have, see a document that verifies that?
Right, they'll, they'll have to provide that. And I think, I think the question that we're, we're starting to address, but we'll, we'll let the applicant speak to it, is, is whether the, the code provision that Patrick Cleary is referencing is the appropriate code provision that, that dictates whether this application is governed by, by that code section or, or the code section of, of a museum. And, you know, we just need to identify the criterion for each.
And there may be historical documentation that supports this. We have museums in the village. We have philanthropic institutional uses in the, in the village. So a little bit of research probably gets to the bottom of this as well.
Okay, but again, I, I don't, I, I want to hear, you know, uninterrupted, the presentation from, from the applicant next Thursday night, and then we can proceed from there. For now, let's, let's move on to the next new case, which is Village of Southampton, Lake Agawam.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Do we have any questions about this application, or should we wait for the public hearing next Thursday night?
Yeah, this is just about the water lilies in Agawam. So I think just hear what the town wants to say.
Agreed. Does anybody have any initial concerns or questions about this case, Village of Southampton, Lake Agawam?
I think it can be resolved at the actual presentation. I do have some questions.
But, okay, so we, we can wait for the actual presentation next Thursday, and, and let's move on to 950 Meadow Lane. Again, we have not heard this yet. I just don't know if anybody has initial questions or concerns, but otherwise, we can wait for the public hearing.
Yeah.
I think the applicant's letter of April 29th from the attorney really kind of frames out the nature of the application. So yes, I would agree with just hearing it at the meeting. And on Lake Agawam, I've provided input, I'm ready to provide input, and I will do so at the hearing.
On to 99 Sanford Place. Are there any initial questions or, or concerns?
I'm sorry, did we, 950 Meadow Lane?
Yeah, we did go over that. Unless we can go back, do you want to?
Chick, you weren't just commenting on the lilies?
No, on 950 Meadow Lane, the letter from John Bennett.
Yep.
I call it the good thing for the board to review. Actually was, yeah, from John, dated April 29th.
Okay.
Frames out approval on the current application, and I think what they're requesting is clear. We can certainly ask questions at the hearing.
Okay.
And on Lake Agawam, I did just add that, you know, I followed this application, followed all of the activity on the lake and what's being done and has been done. And will be able to comment. Again, their letter request is very straightforward. Can have further discussion at the meeting, or I can answer any question.
Well, I thought their report was pretty amazing when they had an idea and then they, that wasn't the right idea. Are there stipulate, I feel like I would try to rely on you about what's the proper procedure? I mean, I don't think they should be able to go out anytime and do the, they should choose two times during the year, whatever you think. And I also was questioning, I didn't see where the disposal of the plant material that they took out was mentioned. And if you have input, I, I would want your guidance on that, Chick.
Yeah, I think this is helpful, just because I know that Catherine Somow does represent the applicant. I don't think it's necessary to admit her unless the board asks questions. But Susan, your comments are very much in line with my read of their letter, which is April 9th. And my first question was, what is the new upland staging area? Because previously it was the trustees' land at the south end in the parking area. We do know from the letter that the trustees have given them the opportunity to harvest at any time of the year. But I would ask the same question. Are there seasons when you, they clearly would not harvest? And why don't they just specify when to harvest? And that's really contained in the body of their letter.
Right.
So I agree with those questions. The applicant is listening. They certainly can address those at the hearing, at the meeting. And I'll make a few remarks about Lake Agawam and some of the ongoing projects that are in the body of knowledge as we go forward. Do that now or, or, or next week.
I think it should be public.
Chick, as well, just so you know, she left, so if you need to maybe send her an email, she isn't listening anymore.
No problem. I think we understand. If it's okay with the board, I could fill her in, or she can look at the, this will be up as a recorded meeting, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I'll encourage her to review the discussion, just so they're aware. Thank you, Antoinette.
But moving on to 99 Sanford Place. Does the board have any initial concerns or, or questions with respect to this application?
I had this one years and years ago. This application, to do something with this property and they didn't do it.
That's interesting.
I think it's owned by the Platt family.
I think it was.
It was anyway, yeah.
I mean, the, the language in, in the request seems a little odd. It says two single-family dwellings for each proposed lot. I'm not sure they mean that.
No, I think they mean.
I hope not. I'm sorry, Kevin, what do you think it means?
They mean two single-family dwellings on the entire property.
Right, one, one dwelling on each of two lots.
Right.
I, I think that's what their intent is, but we'll.
That's not how I read it at all. It's not how I read it at all. I thought that they were asking for multifamily housing. And I was questioning how the zoning there.
It is, that is what it says, Julia. It says single-family dwellings for each proposed lot. I, I, maybe you're right. They'll have to clarify next Thursday night. I didn't see anything in their paperwork that indicated they were, they were requesting two houses on each lot. I, I take that to mean that they were trying to put, instead of.
It might, it might just be a typo.
Yeah, so we'll find out next Thursday night.
Very private back there, right behind Schmitz, seemingly private. There's no traffic whatsoever.
Unless you're leaving Schmitz out the back. Unless you're leaving out the back of Schmitz.
I mean, it's, it's a dead-end street.
Right.
Okay, so let's move on then to 86 West Prospect Street, which, by the way, I'm going to recuse myself from this, Kevin. So if you could take over the chairmanship on 86 West Prospect, I appreciate that.
This is the one where they want a pool? Where do I find it?
Yes, they want a pool.
Yeah. This was a Baruchy house, right? I think we just got to hear, they just got to listen to what their presentation is.
I agree.
Yeah. Pool, that close, it's pretty close, 27 feet. They're gonna have to show that there's no place else that they can put it.
Well, maybe they need to show a smaller pool that might help.
For a small pool, yeah. Quarter of eighty square feet would be twenty by what? Twelve? That'd be 240. Twenty by twenty-four. They could probably reduce that.
Okay, can we go on to the next?
Yeah, we'll have to hear it anyways.
The next case is
Joe McLaughlin.
365 and 385 South Main Street, Joseph McLaughlin. Can we get, who's, who's presenting on, on behalf of trustee McLaughlin? Ken, are you doing that? So here I still see his icon.
The only person I have in the audience is Carl Benakasa.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that it will be Ken Gray with respect to that, based on my discussions with him.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that.
Are, are you presenting on, on behalf of Joseph McLaughlin, 365 and 385 South Main Street?
Yes, trustee McLaughlin has filed an appeal pursuant to Village, New York State Village Law, Section 7-712A-4. I've submitted the paperwork on his behalf, and he is challenging the building department's determination to issue two COs for separate properties identified as 365 South Main Street and 385 South Main Street. I'm going to ask the board, I'll ask tonight, and I'll also ask at the public session, which is scheduled for two weeks from now, that
It's next week.
Next week, I apologize. That the, the transcript and the record and all exhibits that had been previously presented to this board over a, I'm going to say a six-month period, and, and possibly up to 12 hearings, I'd ask that that entire record be made part of this hearing, so that there's a full record of the proceedings that would be for you. My understanding is that there was an application for a subdivision that was working its way through the zoning board. And then after, again, 12 months, oh, excuse me, six months and 12 hearings, the applicant was granted the independent COs that, that are the subject of this appeal. And they withdrew their application to the zoning board. So this is the basis of the appeal. We've submitted the documentation as requested by the process outlined by the building department for the zoning appeal. I believe everything has been submitted, and we're ripe to go for a hearing next week.
Mr. Gray, we were really at the end of our deliberations, and we're, I think, moving toward a decision, when abruptly this was removed from our purview, which confused many of us. It seemed to be a very odd way of doing things, something I've never experienced on the boards I've sat on.
The, the answer to that is, I don't disagree with you. I obviously was not involved in that process. I'm, you know, coming in a little late to the, the party, so to speak, but I think it is appropriate. It's, it's legal, and there is a mechanism for a trustee to file an appeal, which trustee McLaughlin has done. And I agree with you that I believe this board was coming to the end of its process, so to speak. Process, so to speak. So I I think what's before this board, because this board has so much history. And knowledge of this particular application. There's not much of a presentation that needs to be done. I think it 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 whittles down to a. An issue of law, which I think Mr. Blinkoff can certainly. You know. Nail down for you. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, previous counsel to the zoning board had already opined on. What he thought was the appropriate thing for this zoning board to do. So again. What I'm suggesting is I don't. I don't need to reinvent the wheel. The history for the last six months or 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 more than that is there. We have the record. We have the transcripts. We have the documents. We have the exhibits. And I think it 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 whittles down to a interpretation of the law on whether or not. These partial merged or they didn't merge. So with that said, I'll answer any questions the board may have.
So I would. I think that transferring all the records is important. And I would add that the applicant asked for a number of adjournments while all these, which we allowed. When they were, I don't know what they were doing, but they were. Suddenly it was, it wasn't. We worked so hard on it and then it was removed. It was to me quite a shock.
I I do want to clarify for the for the board members. There were two. Issues that we were addressing during our 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 five or so months of deliberations. The first issue was, did the lots merge under our zoning code? And then if they did merge, we were going to. Entertain whether. The applicant. Was justified in obtaining an area variance. What what is involved here and correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, or correct me if I'm wrong, Jeffrey. Is is only the initial issue. Did the two lots merged? Under our zoning code. If nonconforming lots. Are held in common ownership, they merged. And my understanding is that that's the only issue right now before the board, whether or not this board. Agrees with prior counsel and current counsel, Jeffrey Blinkoff. When they opine that, yes, according to the zoning code of the Village of Southampton. These two lots, three sixty five and three eighty five, in fact, merged. And and I did notice in in Ken's submission, something I hadn't previously seen because it hadn't previously been submitted. But that the deed into common ownership was actually only one deed. They didn't even, you know. They didn't even pretend that that. They were executing two deeds. They transferred ownership. To one entity via the same deed. That was not previously part of the record. I I just thought it was additional information. That we as a board should look at. And, you know, I I think it's a somewhat limited issue. I just wanted the other board members to understand that. We're not going through the the question of area variance. We're simply looking at whether or not the lots merged.
I'd like to hear what the previous counsel said.
I forwarded.
Oh, what our previous counsel said.
Sure, sir, what I forwarded earlier and I can forward again. There was a prior letter prepared by your then counsel, so I'll forward that to you again. And when she provided an opinion and just to to back up to what the chairman was just saying. And I think this also echoes what Mr. Gray was saying. What's before the board now is very specific. It is an appeal asking for an interpretation of a determination. Made by the building inspector, the building official. By which he issued two separate COs to the property. So the question is, does this board believe that that determination was correct or incorrect? That's that's the specific issue before this board. So, sir, I'll send around to the board again, the the prior note from counsel, just so everybody has.
Okay, and could you just, what what is your opinion, Jeffrey, as to whether or not the lots merged?
But what I'd like to do, Chairman, if I may, is in terms of because this being a public meeting. If I can, I'll provide a memo to the board as well, providing my legal input, if I may do so.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Any any other questions of me? If not, I will see you next week.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you all.
Okay, do any board members have any questions, concerns about the application or anything else?
I think that's the ballgame.
We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you. We'll see you next Thursday night.
Thank you.
You all. Have a great night.